Good afternoon. If I could have everyone's attention, I'd like to welcome you to the November 7th work session of the Forsyth County Board of Education. As we all rise, let's take a moment of silent reflection for all the things we're grateful for. Now, we'll pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. There's quite a distinguished group out there today.
Yes, very distinguished.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Shall move.
A motion by Tom and a second by Mike, all in favor, unanimous. Okay, first, we have presentation and discussion items. The draft of the 25-26 student calendar with none other than Mitch Young.
What'd you do that for? Scaring people at home?
I'm just making sure it's working. All right, bear with me just a second. Good afternoon. Okay, the school calendar. So here is where we are. We are here to present to you the final version that our staff has worked on for the 25-26 school calendar. We'll present it to you tonight. Again, I'll be open to input from all the board, of course, between now, next week, and then after any adjustments from that final week, then we'll present the final version next week. Again, these were the parameters that we started with. 178 student school days, 190 contract days for our teachers. We do our best to balance first and second semesters. We want to have our students done by Memorial Day weekend. We've had the luxury the last few years of having our teachers done by that. This is one of those calendars where that luxury did not afford itself, and that was reflected in the feedback. Now, I put this in bold yellow here because as we shared this with the community and asked for their feedback, the reminder was whenever you take a day away from one part of the calendar, you have to add it back in somewhere else so that we still have a 178 and 190. That was not always the case in the feedback, and I'll address that in just a second. But this was what we started with about a month ago when we showed you this first draft of this. We had gotten feedback from our local school councils, principals, and cabinet members, and these were the two adjustments that we made right out of the gate. The idea of starting, having teachers come back for one day on January 2nd on a Friday, the day after New Year's, was a suggestion that both the LSEs and the principals pushed back on. So we moved that start date to the 5th. The problem is that this compresses the calendar, so when you go through this, that means that our first day of school then had to be pushed to August 5th. I know, as we'll hear from the feedback, and you'll see from the feedback that I share with you, that a lot of folks really are desirous to have a Thursday school start. We can do that, but in order to do that, we would have to start the school year on July 31st for students. And based on last year's feedback, when we had them start on August 1st, that was very unpopular. And so to push them to July 31st, I think would really, as I said last time, would really create a lot of consternation. The only other option to do then with students, if we wanted to start on a Thursday, August 7th, is we would have to find two days somewhere else in the calendar, which means we'd either have to take away from fall break, Thanksgiving, winter break, spring break, or tack two days on after Memorial Day. And the feedback is all over the place, you know, on that with ideas. The bottom line is, most people are very adamant. They think we start too early as it is, and to start earlier, I really think would open up a can of consternation, put it that way. And to bring students back for two days after Memorial Day, I think would do the same. So here's, just to kind of summarize the feedback for you. So I've already mentioned the early start day concerns. We do, in the feedback, as you read through it, there are a lot of folks, I think, who've moved here, as I did at one time, from a northern state, and people are used to starting after Labor Day and going to mid-June. That has never been the way we've rolled, at least not in the 17 years that I've been in our system, nor any of the systems around us. The Thursday start date, I talked about that already. This required an earlier starting date, July 31st. Last time at Thanksgiving or fall break, that was in several suggestions that came back, that we could cut days at one of these breaks, and that would allow a little bit earlier start date or later start date or earlier finish date. We had a fifth grader suggestion that was really interesting, and I'm going to go ahead and just say that to you. It was a great letter that I received from a fifth grade student at Coal Mountain that suggested we take two days away from Thanksgiving break and put them back into October 31st and November 1st, because on October 31st, students at elementary are too excited about Halloween activities to concentrate, and on November 1st, they're just too exhausted from the activities from the night before. And I bring this up because what I really appreciate about this young man's letter is he actually, when he tinkered with the calendar, he realized that if he was going to add two days of vacation in there, that he would have to steal them from elsewhere. And that was great. The rest of the suggestions that I got really advocated for the one piece of the calendar they got, they wanted, and if we were to follow those suggestions all the way through, we would have about 167 school days. So here we are. Okay. Each year, each of the three years anyway that I've been on this job and talking to my predecessors, he said this was pretty normal as well. You'll get a handful that would like to have spring break either a week earlier, a week later, fall break a week later is often suggested, but not a real consensus for those. And then the elimination of online learning days. I am going to continue to argue that it's important to have an online learning day in the fall because that allows us to test out our systems and make sure we're prepared in the event of an inclement weather day. You know, I won't even use the P-word, but another, you know, situation like we had a couple of years ago. It really helps to have a day to make sure everything's working and to test out with your teachers to make sure they know how and where to post and how to facilitate that. We also, in this calendar, have one in the spring that could be easily converted to an early release date. Really, what I'm waiting for right now is I've put some feelers out to the principals and some specific survey feedback out to our principals, that I want them to give us theirs, their teachers and their LSEs' perspectives on how the online learning day we had earlier this year went for them. If we need to come back and amend, we certainly can do that. But again, I would really, really urge that we keep that one in the fall at a minimum. The probably biggest concern that you'll see, and this was, you know, pretty much lined up with staff members that filled out the feedback. We don't ask for names, but we do ask whoever's filling out the feedback, are they a parent? Are they a community member, or are they a staff member? The staff members were very loud and clear that their major concerns were coming back for three days after Memorial Day for post-planning. It is not conducive to professional learning. In their mind, at the end of the year, you're exhausted, you want to wrap things up, just as the kids do, and move on. Not a great time for fresh learning or new learning. And talking to cabinet members and principals, there's a lot of things that come to us over the summer. So you could do a post-planning and do professional learning, but we may have things that come out from the state over the summer where now things that you've worked on at the end of the year are obsolete. And so the feeling was that these days would be much better used at the start of the school year, not at the end of the school year, and that you could use those in pre-planning. So what I did with this calendar then, based on the principal's feedback and their conversations, is if you look down in May, where we had three days of post-planning there, we have taken two of those days and moved them to July 24th and 25th, which coincidentally, next year, when we start the school year, the 24-25 calendar also starts on July 24th. So it's not calendar-wise any earlier than we already approved for next year. But then that means we have just one post-planning day after Memorial Day. Again, there was no way to eliminate that, and in talking to most principals, particularly at elementary and middle school levels, they felt that they really needed a full day at the end of the school year to get everything wrapped up, inventoried, and wrapped up for the summer. So that is a change that we put in from the last time that we met, based on the feedback that we got. Any questions at this point?
Just to make something clear, I don't ever hear the feedback, and I wonder why, but where are the days, the classroom days and the contract days set? Is that in law, or is that from the DOE?
No, we, with our waiver, first off, let me go back. Our contracts with teachers are 190-day contracts. So those can't, unless we wanted to redo all the contracts that we've been on, we can't take away from those 190. There is flexibility that we have as a strategic waiver system where we could lower the number of student school days. And so we could just say, let's go to 176 days instead of 178, and start that on a Thursday. Now, that would add two more professional learning days to teachers to make sure. So when you do that, you've got contractual concerns that you've got to take into account. Yeah.
Yeah, let me, where's the back here?
There, this one? Yep. So that brings that into play, Mr. Cleveland.
Yeah, I just wanted to be transparent about, you know, why we have to go so many days.
There's a minimum number of hours from the state. And a few years ago, we went to school 180 student days. Now we're 178. And we did that because at that time, there was a big need for additional professional learning. So we went from 10 days to 12 days. We still meet the number of hours, we're well above the number of hours required by the state, but about five years ago, we were 180 days. Now we're 178. With 12 professional learning, and that came from our staff suggesting that the 10 days was not enough. So now we have 12.
Yeah, it's not just us sitting around deciding how many days we're going to school and how many days teachers are.
Yep.
Well, you could go down to 176 and then move it to the start date to Thursday, and then remove the staff coming on the 24th and 25th, and they just start Monday to 28th, right?
No, because then that, if you remove those two student days, you're also removing two staffs, so now you've dropped your staff to 188 days.
Oh, gotcha.
And that's where the contractual question comes in, which, by the way, I had that same thought, Mr. McCall, and Dr. Salome quickly corrected me.
It's a fancy blender you use to get this calendar out.
It's, yeah, this was not a fun one. And for the families and teachers that are out there that are watching this and think that we have enjoyed putting this calendar together, I promise you, we have not. I would love for us to have everybody start in August and be done by Memorial Day. And some years, you can do that, and we've been fortunate, the last three or four years, it's landed that way. The feedback, several places, they say, well, you finally got it right after all these years, why would you mess with it now? And it's, it's not me, it's the calendar, whoever developed the calendar.
Well, I think that comes a good point. If we were to say, hey, our priorities are this, we can't always make it. And so the 26-27 year, we'll put that priority back in. And the priorities that we hear from the community all the time is, start on a Thursday, don't ever take fall break away. And so, you know, those are the things that we hear, and so, you know, we're not doing that here because the start on a Thursday because of the way the calendar, but the next one, we can make that.
Yep. Okay. I appreciate your time and look forward. If you have more questions throughout the week, please do not hesitate to reach out to me.
Just to remind people in the public who may be watching, the board will actually vote next week.
Correct.
On the final version. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have legislative priorities with Jennifer Cratchelo.
Good afternoon. We have three priorities before you for this year. The first is student and staff safety. Oh, you don't want me to do it from memory? Okay. Student and staff safety, the second is student transportation, and the third is professional learning. While we greatly appreciate the money that the state gave us last year for the grants, we received $50,000 per school. We would like this to be a regular line item in the state budget. Right now, we are spending $3.1 million between our SROs and our SASs. Those are all out of local funds. For student transportation, if we can't get our children to school, then they can't learn. And of course, you know what you're paying at the gas tanks, and you also know too what we're facing as far as a bus driver shortage. We've never had a shortage this high before in the history of Forsyth County schools. So right now, we only receive 1.8 million from the state for transportation, and we are paying locally $22.6 million. So we would like that to be a partnership more with the state as far as increased cost for the shortage for employees, fuel costs, and then just routine costs we have to maintain and update our fleet. And the very last is professional learning. We are looking at what the state has provided as far as professional learning, and it's actually back to a level that is from 22. We would like them to go back to a level from the FY 2002 level. They've cut it over the years significantly, and we know that ensuring our teachers have the training and expertise necessary to educate our students is critical, especially in light of some of the recent legislation, particularly the Georgia Early Literacy Act from 2023.
And I just wanted to add to Jennifer's comments. Number one, how much I appreciate our current governor and our legislature for the support they've given to public schools over the past several years. We have seen a dramatic increase in spending at the state level, which has enabled us to increase salaries for our staff, which has been greatly appreciated. I also want to say that these three priorities you see in front of you are consistent with other educational organizations in our state, Georgia School Boards Association, Georgia School Superintendents, Georgia Association of Educational Leaders are all on board with these three particular priorities. We'll meet with our delegation in December before the session starts to review these. And then Mr. Valdez had recommended we add impact fees to the priorities, and I think that's certainly worth us talking about tonight. It's been a conversation we've had for many years. It did seem to get a little more traction during last year's session, so if you wanted to add to that, that's something we could certainly add as a priority.
Yeah, so for the benefit of the public, because I know those of us up here, we know this, education is the one part of affected by growth that is not eligible for impact fees. So the Georgia constitution prohibits us from seeking impact fees from developers, even though this development is exclusively causing the growth to the school system. So it seems a little bit unfair. This last year, that bill, almost every year, they try to get it across the finish line. This last year, I testified in front of the Governmental Affairs Committee, it made it out unanimously. It was very close to getting a vote on the floor, and it didn't. And the reason why it didn't is because other counties now want to join in, so it's getting tweaked. So it seems like there's a very real possibility this year that we can see that happen, and I think we'd be remiss to not show our support and interest in our delegation pursuing that.
So if the other three of you are okay with that, we could certainly add that as a priorities as we get ready for that meeting in December with our delegation.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate. We've been talking about it for probably over 30 years when impact fees first came out, and, you know, it kept falling on deaf ears, it started getting a little traction. So it's like a lot of things, it takes many years to get this stuff enacted, and I think it doesn't hurt to start again.
... testified, and they were like, they laughed me out of the place, so it's come a long way, I guess.
It's come a long way.
They said, when your millage rate gets to be 20, come back and see us.
Well, I think a lot of other counties are now feeling growth like we're feeling, so all of a sudden, people are more interested in impact fees for education. We charge it for a lot of other stuff, police, fire, water, sewer, libraries, I mean, a lot of other stuff.
Maybe, yeah, I think Lindsay went too.
Couple of years ago, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe.
I think we all go, once a year, somebody different goes.
Well, that's good.
I think we signed a resolution two years ago that says we support it.
We did, yeah. Okay, so it looks like we have a consensus, we'll add that to our list of priorities, so we'll have four when we meet with the delegation. I don't know if anybody had anything else they wanted to add while we're having the conversation.
The only thing I would add, and I don't know that it's a legislative priority per se, but it's certainly related, I kind of mentioned this, we're emailing a little bit. I think we should invite the county commission to join us at this breakfast and have a segment dedicated to the real impacts of growth on this board and what that does to the tax rate and what that does to the public. Because right now, the perception in the community is that, you know, the Board of Ed is just always, you know, raising taxes and charging all these taxes, but really, we're responding to growth. We're not, we do not create the need for additional taxes, that's created by growth. And the county has a lot of, and the city as well, has a lot of influence in that. So I would love to see them get involved in this process with us, and, you know, they're legislators in their own right, and there's things that they can do to help us with this problem. So I think it's, this next year, we should really increase our involvement in this question.
I mean, that makes sense, and even if we had an inner-county priority list, we could start and talk about how we can better serve each other.
And add the city to that too, as well?
Maybe city-county together, I think it's similar issues, right?
Several years ago, we did have meetings, like the board chair and vice chair, and the commission chair and vice chair, just had a couple of meetings a year and talked about that kind of thing and the impacts and stuff. I don't know if it helped. I mean, we do send the impact statements and stuff, which I don't, there's never anything wrong with talking about it.
To the county. We send it to the county, not the city.
Not to the city.
Right. Maybe we need to meet with the city and see if that would be beneficial for them when they're doing this stuff.
Yep.
Because I know they don't affect as many schools, but they, it affects some of them. So maybe we should try to set up, not with the legislators, I feel like if everybody's there, we might not be able to get our point across.
But do a separate one.
Yes.
I think the other thing is if they could share their planning and their vision of what they have, then we can better our facilities plan to match their vision. You know, some of the issues that we're seeing is that they have commercial property right now that they're zoning to residential. Well, that zoning property that's a commercial is not on our radar.
Right.
Because it's commercial. And now, all of a sudden, now it's residential, which impacts the school. So I think just better communication between us.
One of the things that I'm messaging to the public is, you know, this board and even prior boards have put us in a really fiscally responsible trajectory. You know, we've got a low millage rate, the lowest in 17 years, paying down debt faster than ever, we're not borrowing anymore, right? How long can we keep that up if this county continues to grow at this rate? And then when we are forced to do something unpopular, the finger gets pointed at us. But I think really, this is a broader conversation about growth and how that affects our schools.
Yeah, I think maybe we should just meet with each one, each group, what do y'all think? It's a good idea?
I'd also add in the chamber, because they're responsible for economic development, just to throw that out there, because then that offsets the burden from the taxpayers from the residents.
As a whole, every time.
Good idea.
Well, if we're going after two, we might as well add in the third, so.
All right.
Okay, we'll work on that then together, and I will add impact fees to the legislative priorities, and they will come back to you next week for approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have teaching and learning update, return to rigor with LeAnn Rice.
RTR.
RTR, I like that.
RTR.
She's got a group.
She's got backup.
I've got a great team here with me.
Hey, LeAnn, if you don't mind, before you start, Brittany, I just received your email about the iGym team you want to share with everybody, because that's brand news.
Yeah, jump in.
News. I'm sorry.
Which is my thunder.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know you were going to do that. Okay, I'm sorry. Do whatever you're going to do.
Point of privilege.
Hey, I'm Brittany Cantrell, I think I know all of you, but we got back very, very late last night, so I apologize in advance. We had quite the flight delays, but our iGym team competed in Paris at the International Jamboree. It's a synthetic biology competition. We are bringing home a gold medal. We were placed in the top 10 high school teams in the entire world. We were also nominated for best measurement and best model, with our both mathematical pieces. So I definitely emailed my counterparts and texted them, like, guys, all the maths! But also inclusivity, which is very important because that's the component of science for all. Like, how do we make science accessible and real for everyone? And then also best wiki, which is how we presented our material, so our students have to code their own website, so they build it from scratch. So we are quite proud of everything they've done, and it lines very much with what, I'll have a five minutes, I've been told, I will set a timer because I can talk about science forever. But yeah, we're just absolutely thrilled. Amanda was kind enough to let the kids have an excuse to absent stay because they are dead, like, actually dead. They were on the plane, passed out like this, and everyone was like, ah, do all the homework on the plane, Dr. C, immediately, so, but. They definitely are because they're all in the group chats, like, oh my God, what do you have left? Did you talk to so-and-so?
We'll have to recognize them.
That's why Brittany has a time limit.
This is why.
Congratulations. You have three minutes when you come back up.
I didn't know I was going to be deducted by total of that.
Two and a half now.
I'm stopping.
Yeah, get that red buzzer out.
Let's get the buzzer out.
So at last month's work session, you all asked us to update you on how we are returning to rigor. After the pandemic, we saw a lot of changes in our schools and our instructional strategies and assessment, and so I am very proud and very pleased to have this team of people behind me that really, they're the movers and shakers in what we do in our classrooms. As always, we are looking at your governance goals within our work, and today, we're focused specifically on the learner profile and the strategic plan. Dr. Bearden makes that very clear, that these are two non-negotiable documents in our district, they are living, breathing documents, which we work from. And so I hope that as you hear the pieces today, that you'll pay particular attention with our strategic plan. Our teaching and learning department is responsible for a whole section, for the learner experience. And so you're going to hear two of our content specialists, one from science, one from mathematics, as well as our assessment coordinator, and as well as our professional learning specialist. And I want you to pay close attention to how we are engaging students in impacting their achievement and their growth and their engagement, but also how we're moving toward more consistent assessment and grading practices. We believe that rigor doesn't just happen on a test, it doesn't just happen on one event, one day. This is something that should be a part of our classroom experiences every single day. And so with our curriculum, our instruction, our assessment, our professional learning, and our student engagement, each of those pieces contributes heavily to the ability of our students, all of our students, to achieve at high levels, and that's through the rigor that we provide. So I am going to start by introducing Dr. Cantrell, who doesn't need an introduction, but is going to focus a little bit more specifically on science, and as you heard her say, science for all.
Hey, do I really have to set a timer for two and a half minutes?
Yeah.
We have a buzzer.
I literally am setting a timer. So thank you so much for an opportunity to have a chance to speak with you guys, and I know I represent a great group of people, but wanted to talk a little bit about secondary science and what we're doing to talk about, you know, achievement and engagement. So really, a huge focus on clarity and consistency and equity in our middle and high schools. We want our students to have an opportunity to behave and think and communicate like scientists. The reality is, those connections to the real world are how we get students to engage with the work that they do, and we make that core disciplinary work meaningful. Science is great in what you know, but what can you do with it? And that's the skill set that we want them to take outside of our building so that they can pursue continuous learning in whatever they do next. So how do we do that? What are we looking at? We're looking at things like resources and programming, professional development for our teachers, support for our teachers and students, as well as the opportunities and involvement that they have access to outside of the core curricular work that makes doing science possible. So the clarity, consistency, and equity piece has been really valuable, stepping in and assessing our middle and high schools and making sure that the experiences that our students are having from one place to the next are very consistent. And so that looks like phenomena-based, real-world science, where students are having opportunities to do science, to engage with science, to put their hands on things and answer essential questions that are not just one bright answer, making sure that our teachers have the resources that are needed to do science. The reality is, science is not a textbook, and it's ever-growing. So we have to make sure that our teachers have access to materials to do the science that makes it real for our students, as well as the job-embedded professional development and professional learning that's needed to stay consistent and new and relevant with the work that we're doing. Science does change constantly, and so that requires an amount of support for our teachers so that they can also stay, you know, up to date with like the best and how-to. And then the equity piece, we're working really hard to build common student experiences across our districts so that all sixth-grade earth students will have a lab in rock cycles. But we want to make sure that our students are all having equal opportunities to do science, and that's coming through the lens of making sure that our teachers have the resources, they need to provide those opportunities, and the support needed to make that happen. So what does this look like in practice? It looks like a 3D approach to science education. We're all very, very familiar with core disciplinary ideas. In fact, I would, I would say that most people, when they think about standards, they're really thinking about the core ideas. But the reality is, in science education, our standards are 3D. They also include science and engineering practices. What are students doing to act like scientists, as well as cross-cutting concepts? How are they connecting ideas? How are they connecting one science class to another, and how are they connecting it to their literature class and their math class? Because the reality is, is that when we talk about acting and thinking, connecting like scientists, we're also talking about communicating like scientists. Every single one of our standards, K-12, starts with obtain, evaluate, and communicate. Because the reality is, is that when we talk about acting and thinking, connecting like scientists, we're also talking about communicating like scientists. Every single one of our standards, K-12, starts with obtain, evaluate and communicate. We have literacy built into everything that we do and that's a piece of the doing science. If you're doing science effectively, you are talking about the science, you're engaging with, you're having conversation, you're making it real-world. And that's the piece that makes science for all because it is naturally differentiated for all learners when you do it in that capacity. So what does that mean? Resources and programming. We're doing science. So we're providing materials for students and teachers. We're, we're creating, we're creating an opportunity in a situation where science really is a verb, where we are walking into classrooms and providing the support for kids to really get in there and, and, and think about what they're doing from a holistic standpoint. What does this look like in the real world? Why does this matter? We've all asked that question. Why am I learning this? Well, here's why, babe. You know, here's why, students. Okay. So the professional development piece, we have teachers coming in all the time, job-embedded, ongoing, hands-on, teacher-centered professional development. We're listening to what they need in a real-time offering that to them so that they can provide 3D experiential learning opportunities to our students. Support comes in the way of co-teaching and modeling, personalized professional development that's at schools or, or coming here to the district. Again, based on feedback that they're telling us, what do you need? What can I make? You know, what can we make that look like for you guys? And then the opportunities and involvement piece, the reality is, is that we have students, science is their sport. And so we have kids who are just dying to get in there and do. And they want stuff outside of the traditional school day. And so we talk about science fair and science olympiad. You know, we're sweeping regionals and states and sending kids to international science fairs. We have things like STEM camps and workshops that our teachers are leading or some of our students are leading so that we can grow a STEM pipeline in our district of kids that really have opportunities to do science at all levels. You know, IGIM is just one thing that we can showcase, but we have STEM nights across our district that make science for all possible. We have ambassadorship programs. We have women in STEM programs. So we have all kinds of opportunities to engage all students because the thing is, it is science for all. Like, science is for everyone. Every kid is capable of being a scientist and we want every kid to feel that way. But it looks different for different kids. And so we're making sure that that programming is what kids need and it meets them where they are. And I think with that, I was over by three seconds.
Kathleen.
How much of my time did you take?
Three seconds.
Okay, awesome, awesome. Hi, everybody. Good afternoon. My name's Kathleen Carpenter and I'm the secondary math specialist for the county. And in, in concert with what Dr. Cantrell just shared with you, I want to share with you about what we've been working on with our math program. I'm not quite as excitable as, as Dr. Cantrell is. So you'll see a little different tone to what I'm sharing with you. But we've been able to make quite a few strides in the last few years that I think you'll see along with consistency and equity in our math program. So the first thing I wanted to share with you is just some ideas about some things we've been working on in middle school. In our middle school, we have maintained our math paths, even though the state of Georgia took them away from us. With our most current revision of the math standards, the state of Georgia eliminates some of our math paths. And with our data and looking at what our families have asked for and what we've been successful with in the past, we've kept those and I'll share with you kind of the results of those. Right now we have three math paths in our middle school. The top program is called accelerated math. Those students culminate in a math experience in their senior year at the Georgia Tech Distance Math Program. Excuse me. I've been talking to teachers all day. So let me grab my water. We've been building curriculum all day. Our advanced math students take eighth grade algebra. That's a new program that's been in place for about, this is our sixth year. And then we have just over half of our students who complete on-level eighth grade math by the time they leave middle school. That path, those paths are flexible. And one challenge we have right now with our teacher shortage is finding qualified teachers who are high school certified, who want to teach middle schoolers. And so what we've been doing the last couple of years is I've been teaching a GATES math prep course at night for teachers who are interested in updating their, their teaching certificate so that they're high school certified. We've had quite a success rate with that and I'm really excited to keep that up as long as we need to. And then the other hallmark of our middle school program as far as providing equity for students is we have bridge courses. In the past, we would test students at the end of fifth grade and that was your math path. And that became a very high-pressure experience for children and their families. And then also it kind of locked kids in. So we now have transition programs in middle school that allow students to change their math path and helps with flexible placement and also helps us immensely with students who move in from other states and countries. So there is not a quiz on this flexibility options. But I did want to just show it to you, to show you the magnitude of what we've been working on. What you see in the green arrows are every option there is in a middle schooler to change their math path. That involves a lot of sweat equity. They actually have to do math to change their math path. We've set up self-guided work in the summer that students can participate in, as well as at the high school levels, even we have some students taking advantage of this stuff. Last year we had about 650 students across the county who participated in one of these four programs. What's great about these programs is because we're in middle school, we're still in that no harm, no foul environment where children, if they decide that it's not for them, they don't have to complete and they just stay where they are and keep moving where they are. So this has been highly successful. I have several colleagues around the state who are trying to mimic this program. The other thing then I, the last thing I just want to share about middle school is our intervention program. Thinking about the opposite end of our spectrum as far as students who are very high achieving in math, as well as those who struggle. We use a program in, in middle school. This is a screenshot shot of our remediation program. It's game-based. It's called ST Math. It's markedly different than what they experience in math class because the philosophy is if you get to middle school math and you're not being successful, you don't need more of the same. You need something that's dramatically different. So this program has a visualization and reasoning focus for students. And it's also written with a very minimal language mode, language load. Because what happens with a lot of these students who struggle is that they're also, some of them are struggling with their English language, not necessarily English learners, but also just their speaking and, and verbalization of mathematical ideas. So then the last thing this does is this empowers students so that we have some great data. On average, our students make more than a year of growth in this program when it's implemented with fidelity. So part of my role then is to support our about 280 to 300 students each year and their teachers who are, who are participating in this program. So at the high school level, we've been doing a lot programmatically in the last couple of years to kind of look at our range of course offerings. We've traditionally done a great job with our accelerated students. But what's exciting is, as I've been digging into the data lately, only two-thirds of our accelerated completers actually started in that path. What that means is that they joined that path later when they were ready. And that's a huge empowering thing for families that if I'm not ready in sixth grade to do accelerated math, I can do it later and I can still be successful. The other thing that's very exciting, and hopefully the high school principals agree with me after this year, is that every path now in our district will now include the opportunity for students to take AP Math. So no matter what math you're in, in Forsyth County, which path, when you finish, you'll be able to take AP Math, up to four AP Math classes after this year. I just wanted to highlight a couple of data points that I'm super proud of. When I got here in 2018, we had about 90 students who completed Georgia Tech Math. This year we have over 210. We have so many students in the program, the state had to add more students to the program. There's only about 580 seats statewide and by far we have more students in that program than any other school district. One other math, one other thing I just wanted to highlight as far as high school is we started two, two new courses this year. So if you hear high school math teachers a little stressed out, it's because they're doing a lot of new things and some of them are even teaching new courses. So we have a new course called College Readiness Math. And those students at the end of that course will be able to take the CLEP test, which is the college-level examination program, which will earn them college algebra credit. And we have a partnership with the National Framework of, of nonprofit where students can actually get reimbursed for that. So from an equity standpoint, I can leave high school with three hours of college algebra for $35, which is incredible if you've ever paid college tuition, which I have two college students at my house and I know what that costs. So the other thing then we're doing this year is we're part of the national pilot for our AP Precálculus. That has been as pilot really means. Our teachers are building the plane as we're flying. There are about 1,100 students in our, in our county taking that course, 19 teachers, and they are building the course as it happens. The college board has gotten a little overzealous in their promise as far as how this course is going. So we're learning a lot, but I'm, I'm very confident based on my talk across the, the state with how, how we're doing with that. My big hallmark right now, and I, I think it's really exciting for our county, is that as of this year, every FCS student can leave high school with some kind of college credit in mathematics. One of the biggest reasons kids struggle in math, in, in post-secondary is because they struggle in math. So if we can give students the opportunity to leave high school ahead in math, then it just makes their likelihood of success after high school even stronger. So I just wanted to share a couple of last things then as far as programmatic consistency. You notice I don't say identical programs. We say consistent programs. We have very different needs at our different buildings. And so it's really important that our teachers and our schools feel empowered to offer the math program in the way that suits their population. We do a lot of benchmarking across. That's where I was all day today with algebra, an advanced algebra teacher from every building, working on the nitty-gritty of how are we teaching this? What does it mean to teach this standard? How are we assessing students? So we have internal collaboration and I also very consistently network state and nationally with, with my job-alikes to, to make sure we're being consistent and we're making the kind of rigor that we know our students need. With the state of Georgia making the changes to the curriculum standards they did for this year, we no longer have textbooks that align to those standards, which is, is a good and a bad thing. But what is, what the biggest benefit is that our teachers own our curriculum and our teachers build our curriculum. And we have incredible teachers. And so that's a really powerful curriculum we have. And along with that, then we're trying to provide some tech-assisted learning tools. So I just wanted to share just briefly because I know the kind of meeting all kids' needs is a, is a real need and, and a real curiosity about how we do that at, at a, a scale of our size. So this is a screenshot from one of our digital math tools. And this is an individual student screen. And once the student completes the assignment, you'll see this is a partial completion from one of our summer bridge students. And I, as a teacher, can see exactly which skills my students were successful in and which ones they weren't and how long it took them to get to that. That's incredibly powerful data for our teachers to have. And then as a teacher, I can go back in and know exactly which student might need help with certain skills. Another one of our tools looks like this. This is our new tool this year. We're still in training for this tool. So in addition to new standards and new learning management system and new courses, we have new tools for our teachers. So this is a class result screen. It shows you very quickly at a glance, if I give this assessment to my students, I can very quickly see which items they completed very quickly. And if you notice there on question six, you see the red bars a little bit longer and it took them six minutes to do that item on average. I might want to look at that and see very clearly, you know, where are my students struggling? So this improved data for our students, teachers and parents is gonna be, continue to be very powerful. I have, I have the capability of pulling district data too, so I think it'll be really exciting for us. So the last thing then I just wanted to share is to get, to get back in, in tune with Dr. Cantrell's is our return to doing math. I think in COVID, what happened was we had a lot of students that watched a lot of math being done on a screen. And then they thought they learned a lot of math. And what we're finding is that that didn't stick in their brains. And so we're trying to get this to return to doing math by focusing on engagement. I just want to show a couple of pictures from some of our teachers. This is from middle school. So this is a tiered assignment. So the students can pick exactly how hard of the math they want to do. And then they take that to the wall and they start doing the math very publicly. And so the teacher can very quickly see, you can kind of see in the background of that picture, that the students post that slip of paper that they picked. And then the teachers can very quickly see who's challenging themselves, who's not. She can self-direct students to pick a different level. By the way, these levels deal with, it's mild, medium, spicy and caliente are the four levels of math problems. And then the other thing that happens is you have this very quick, quick way for teachers to see who's being successful, who's not. Students can collaborate much easier when they're on, up, up doing that vertical math work. And then this is another teacher's example, just of how they have rearranged their classes so that students have technology at their stations as they need it, as well as they're always sitting in a collaborative setting. Along with that, we're doing a real concerted effort to work with our ESOL students and our special education students as far as making sure that they get equally quality math lessons. So a couple, just a few next steps for you to think about as we move forward. And please let me know if you have any questions or feedback. The first thing is to complete our resource development. As I mentioned, we are in the beginnings of a first year of these revised standards. And that's just, I'm spending the bulk of our time with our teachers doing. We have about half of our teachers who work very deeply on this and that's a great percentage. To continue our data analysis, most of my friends behind me know that when y'all are in fall break, I'm in here working on data because I love it. And that is the time when it's quiet and I don't get phone calls and emails and I can dig in to share with some of the data I shared with you today. And I continue to look at that. I'd love to connect with more high, post-high school partners. We have a very good relationship with University of North Georgia's math department. And they've been really helpful in giving our teachers some feedback about how to prepare students for post-secondary. And then the last thing, and this leads me to my next presenter, is we want to work to develop a system for assessment. Right now we've got some really good math assessment tools, but we want to move toward a system, assessment system. So, and that goes to our next speaker.
All right. And how lucky am I to have joined this department after hearing from Brittany and Kathleen and their excitement, right? And we have a whole department who are excited about their different areas. I am Heather Talent. I am the assessment coordinator. And so I just wanted to talk briefly about assessment. We are working on assessment, particularly our focus on formative assessment and how we provide consistent rigor through our common formative assessment across contents and grade levels. So no matter where our students are in their educational journey, what that looks like for them. So this cuts across all contents, like I just mentioned. And what our teachers are focused on doing, of course, the, the level of rigor is provided in the standard. And so our teachers take that standard and as teacher teams, right, collaborative teams, they are deconstructing that standard to really understand it and know how to present that level of rigor, what that standard means to our students. Teachers then align their assessments and learning experiences to those standards. And alignment is key because without alignment, that level of rigor can shift, right? And so we need to make sure that we're maintaining that rigor. Assessments help us do that. If assessments are, are not aligned to standards, then we really risk may, not hitting the mark, right, and, and doing injustice to our students. And then content collaboration teams help ensure that consistency across teachers, across schools. We are large. We have many hands in the pot. And so getting that consistency is hard. It's difficult work. We do that though through professional learning days when teachers can come together, whether that's in the building, so during their planning periods, or whether that's outside the building, district-wide. So here on this slide, you'll see the formative assessment loop. And this is really what's driving my work because we realize that we have great summative assessments that we feel align and prepare our students. But when a formative assessment, when teachers take a look at that formative assessment, when they're building those together, we want to make sure that we're answering these questions, not only from the teacher lens, but also from the student lens. And so on this slide, you'll see that this is really the focus. This is how we empower our students, our educators, and also our families is if students can answer these questions. What do I need to know and be able to do? So has that been clearly communicated? Do students understand the task in front of them, right? And then how will I know I have learned it? What does success look like? Has that been clearly articulated to me? Do I know when I am prepared for that task ahead of me? And then finally, what will I do if I have or have not learned it? We know students learn at different rates of speed. And so that's challenging. How do not only the teachers in the room, but how did the students own that learning? Have they been prepared for answering that next question? If I haven't learned it, what's my next step? If I have learned it, where do I go from here? Implementation is complex. I think that theme has come up over the course of the evening that, you know, when we're dealing with something like assessment, implementation is complex. Our goal though is to accurately report student proficiency while maintaining students' confidence in their continued growth. And is that, if that is the goal, accurately reporting student proficiency. If students know what their proficiency level is and teachers know what that proficiency level is and then it's reported to families so that they understand what that proficiency level is and we're building student confidence in the mix of that because they can answer where to go next, then we know that we have a strong assessment system. So professional learning is critical in this process. And this year we're focused on three particular aspects of that. We have an assessment and grading leader series. So one thing that we found out coming out of COVID, but also last year, we did some work around the district around what do we understand about assessment? And what we know is that we have lots of different viewpoints and we're trying to reach consistency. So we decided we needed to pour into our leaders with some professional learning. So we have an assessment and grading leader series that I lead on DCD days with leaders to make sure that we are understanding what best practice in assessment looks like. We also have Mastery Connect Pilot. Mastery Connect is an, an application tool. Kathleen showed Derivida, which is a tool for math teachers. This would be a tool for all contents, all grade levels. And it does similar visualization of data like Derivida did, where teachers would be able to see where students fall on different standards. So it's, it reports out by standard. So it's, it reports out by standard instead of by task. So for example, you could have overlapping evidence, right? Data is just evidence of student learning, what they know and what they're able to do. If we look at a grade book, you'll have a quiz, a project, a test, and all of that could be overlapping evidence of different standards. What this does is it shows teachers and students and families where students land on specific standards. So we're piloting this to see if this is something that we might want to adopt in the future because we think the visualization of that data is powerful. Here's another view of that. So this is just a different view where you can look at it, you can look at data by class or you can look at it by grade level. You can look at it at the district level across the entire district. So you would be able to see those different lenses. And then the last thing on here is our impact team. We have collected a group of teachers who were nominated, 50 teachers in the district, to be a part of this impact team because of their strong assessment practices, formative assessment practices. And we are working with them over three days throughout this semester to see how their work in the classroom on formative assessment impacts students' self-efficacy. So if we're answering those three questions, what do I need to know and be able to do? How will I know that I've learned it? And what will I do if I have or have not learned it? When we are engaging students in that conversation, what is the impact on their efficacy? Do they feel in control of their educational journey? And that's only going to lead to higher achievement. So this is what we're working on right now with assessment. It's a lot. It's a big lift. It takes a lot of professional learning to get to the level of consistency that we want to have, but we feel like we're at a good place right now. Good start. All right, I'm going to turn it over to my cohort.
Yeah. Hi, everybody. I'm Kayla Duncan. I'm one of our professional learning specialists in teaching and learning. I'm going to share a bit about instructional expectations and engagement with students kind of at a broad level. So the instructional framework is the icon that you see on the screen, plan, implement, monitor and reflect are the four phases. And this really guides the work that we're doing with teachers with designing instruction. And prior to the pandemic, we had mostly a teacher facing document. And in the implementation phase specifically, which is where we're in the classroom, we're implementing the lessons that we've designed, you can see, we had a broad language and it was a bit vague on what was happening and it didn't really connect to the depth or the quality of instruction that we wanted to see students engaging in. And so it was a great start to get us all on the same page and to have common language across the district. But post pandemic, we were able to see what is it that we're expecting? What are we wanting for our students? And so there was a shift in language where our department got feedback and we were able to revise. And you can see with the new bullet points that, and the new indicators, it's student facing. So there's clear success criteria communicated to students. We have higher order questioning. Students are engaging all in, in active learning. And then we're collecting evidence of student learning. So this was more specific about the types of experiences we want all students to participate in. And with this, part of the revision of the learning, as you can hear from our, my colleagues, with the pandemic, we just saw a shift and we wanted to return to the instructional practices that we had in place prior to COVID. And so this supports that. And something that's part of the strategic plan is a focus on cognitive engagement. And where that came from, just seeing experiences of students, but also in my job, I have the opportunity to do empathy interviews with a lot of our schools. We've had over half of our schools complete this process since about 2017. And in the fall of 2022, I was able to turn in a lot of the trends that we had collected from thousands of students and teachers participating in those. And a main theme was that disengagement was happening at all levels of instruction and students wanting to feel engaged. And they gave us ideas of what that would look like. And so participating in meaningful tasks, connecting to the real world, understanding the purpose or why they're learning what they're learning, being able to persevere and problem solve. So this goes with the grit aspect and being able to dig in when something's challenging, but knowing that you can work through it and having opportunities to do that in a safe space. Making connections and learning, both connecting what they're learning throughout the year to build those deeper understandings, but also to connect with their learning and make connections to the real world from within the classroom outside of those four walls. And finally, having the opportunity to reflect on their understanding and see their growth, to have appreciation for those pieces. So these are things that we're really emphasizing in our programs and in our instruction are built into our instructional framework. So that way we can increase rigor through a focus on cognitive engagement. And as Heather mentioned, we also want to shift student beliefs about their learning. So not just achievement, but what do they believe they're capable of? So with the impact team, we have 50 teachers who were nominated for their strong practices and they're engaging students in that formative cycle to increase their efficacy. And this will empower students to own their learning, but also to advocate for themselves. Things that we will hope to see coming out of this, our students are saying, I have the capability to succeed in learning. The grade I make is within my control. I'm persistent when I face challenges. I monitor my own learning. I ask questions when I need help and I use feedback to adjust my approach. So it's a partnership between student and teacher, it's not all on the teacher. And students are able to leave. And we believe that having these beliefs will also translate to life skills that they need beyond the classroom.
Well, as you can tell, my department is very proud of the work that we do. And I am so incredibly proud to be a part of, of this work. What we hope that you saw today is as we are focusing on bringing rigor back to our classrooms and making sure that our students have the opportunities to do their very best possible, we hope that you saw ways that we are focused on achievement and growth, that we're focused on student engagement, and that we are working on building more consistent assessment and grading practices. And you see pictures of the people who presented to you today, but I would be remiss if I didn't point out these amazing people behind me. They all play such a vital role in supporting our teachers and our students and our leaders in the building and making sure that everyone has what they need to succeed. What questions can we answer for you?
Wow. You guys did an amazing job. And one of the things that you can tell is that you have the right team members that really care and put a lot of work into it. So thank you very much for that. The presentation was a lot.
It was very comprehensive.
And so I just need a little bit of help, maybe summarizing for me. So the state obviously has the standards and we meet all those standards. Within those standards are the rigor. The rigor is within the standard, right? What's kind of changed a little bit over the years is how we get there. Before it was a lot of teaching maybe and, and focusing on assessments to learn, to see if they learned the content. Now we're focusing more on engagement to see if they're learning the content.
And, and more of the learning experiences. So one of the things that we work with our teachers on, looking at those standards, we want to focus on the verb that's in the standards. And so that really helps, helps articulate the level of rigor for that knowledge and those skills that need to be demonstrated. If the standard says that students need to be able to explain the processes involved, that's much different than if they have to identify the steps in a problem. And so we really, we, we look with our teachers at identifying those learning targets. So we'll try to break down, the standards can be very wordy and, and have a lot to it. So we want to break that standard down into those specific learning targets. So if, if a student has to explain something, then we might break that down into multiple steps. So they're going to have to know, maybe if they're explaining the, the water cycle process, they're going to have to know what each of those steps is. They're going to have to be able to define certain words. They'll be, have to be able to sequence the order of events in order to fully explain the process. So when you heard several of them talk about identifying their learning targets and then their success criteria, we want to make that clear to students what it's not, what explaining means and all the steps that they have to do to be able to meet the level of rigor for that standard.
Back up one slide if you would, Leanne, because I think you made a great point and a great question. How do we summarize all this? I think these three bullets right here is your summary on everything you heard tonight. Obviously, there's a lot of detail in this and you heard some of that detail tonight. But if you want it kind of a big picture look, these are the three areas of focus right now.
So with the standard, it was, it was stated, I think, the math standard and the math path, we continue to have that even though the state lowered it after COVID? Was the same with any other subject, like science, the same thing?
Well, they, they didn't lower their standards. What they did as far as courses that were offered, and Kathleen, correct me if I'm wrong or jump up and, and jump in. But where we have the opportunities for that accelerated path, where say sixth grade students are focused on not only their sixth grade standards, but their seventh grade standards, if they're on that accelerated path, the state wanted our sixth grade students to stay solely with sixth grade standards. And so we know with our community, with the level of performance of our students, that wasn't going to meet their needs. And so we maintained those multiple paths, but within that, we wanted to make sure that we maintain, or we offered opportunities for students to jump into paths at different points because we didn't want to limit, as, as Kathleen said, that what you do in fifth grade determines your future forever and ever.
And math is the only one that was like that, right?
Math, because they have the different courses that are leveled to that extent in, in middle school in particular, yes.
Okay. And then just one more question. So with the strategy of consistent grading, which was part of the strategic plan, where does the retake take place in this? Like how many times can a student retake? Can I take it once, things like that? How does, what are we doing when they're addressed that?
Yeah. You are welcome to jump up, Heather, if, if I don't articulate this clearly. We, we are at, we're at a place in our district where I think we focused on assessment. We've been talking about assessment for over 20 years. And as Heather said, we still have very, very diverse opinions about assessment. We still have people that feel if a student doesn't do any work, they get a zero no matter what, I'm not giving any credit whatsoever. We have some teachers who look at a grading scale and say, well, a zero is 70 points away from passing. Every other grade distribution is only 10 points. And so that, you can't recover from a zero. So we have people on both ends of the spectrum and trying to get consensus and bring people together has been a difficult thing. So bringing part of, part of what I've done as, as the leader of TNL was specifically hiring Heather for this purpose. And so we've changed the job description of our assessment coordinator to not just focus on state testing and standardized testing and summative test, but really to look at those assessment processes. And so we are in the midst right now, as she and the other professional learning specialist in our assessment and accountability team, of working with school level teams, working with our collaborative teams, working with our school leaders to provide some professional learning, to get to the heart of what are our assessment beliefs and our assessment principles and where can we find consensus? Where can we find a foundation that we're going to springboard from? So as a district, we do not have a policy that says you can or cannot take retests or you can take so many. What we have agreed on for this year is that teachers do not have to reassess every single test. Part of our concern is teacher wellbeing. And, and quite honestly, some of our students know how to game the system and want to retake every single test. And, and what we're trying to avoid is the grade chasing. We want to value learning, not the grade. And so we're empowering our teachers to make decisions in their classroom as they're, as they're formatively assessing their students, making sure they're ready for that summative grade, that summative assessment. But then if students aren't, to have the capability to maybe reassess some of those key standards, not a whole test. They can if they want, but they can also look at perhaps on a midterm exam or on a later unit test, adding some of those other standards back in there to see if students have mastered that. So we have collaborative teams right now working on a variety of strategies for that. And then what Heather is doing and some of our other team members are doing is pulling that feedback together so that hopefully next year, we'll have more definitive assessment and grading practices.
Well, I think it's fair to say that it's tied to our strategic plan, which is a four and five-year process. So this will take some time to do that. So no, thank you for that.
And we want to, we want to do it right. If, I mean, I could, Mr. McCall, I could mandate right now that we retake, students have an opportunity to retake every test, but we're not necessarily going to have people who follow that. And I would like to take our time to build common knowledge and understanding and, and have a united approach that we can all move forward together with. But we have a great, and you're about to hear from our high school principals, we have a, an incredible group of school leaders who also believe wholeheartedly in that consensus and that work. And they're willing to put in the time and the work to, to help us as a district move forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'll have to say, you know, as a board member, we sit outside the fishbowl every now and sometimes. And for us, that's hard and intimidating when we watch this. But I happened to look in my pocket tonight and I have my First Robotics. I'm a judge for First Robotics. So I've seen science over the years push math that has pushed English language and everything else backwards from the desire to want to do something to win, to learning the mathematics at a very high level, back to supporting a lot of, a lot more than just math and robotics. So the comment about First Robotics is it's not just about robots. I've seen that and I've seen it come of age and it's starting to get better and better. We're like iGems competing at world level. And it's amazing to see some of this happen. So in terms of return to rigor, in some cases rigor's out there and we've seen it. We just have to get it, you used the word all. And I appreciate that because all students should get the rigor and math isn't something you're going to like from birth. I don't know why, it's just that way. But if you find something that can light that math candle, it'll happen. And so this is the way you do it, is put something out there that they can solve with it and make it real world. So I appreciate that.
Couple of questions about return to rigor.
Yes, sir.
RTR. We're going to make a T-shirt. This, this, this is a topic that I'm particularly interested in because I think, you know, the, one of the secret sauces to our success here has been that it's a rigorous school system. And I get it that COVID changed the world and we're, we're crawling out of that, right? So kind of from where we sit and looking, looking in, right? We're not in the classroom. It sounds like the whole process of assessments is in process, right? It's something we're starting. It's something that, that is a work in progress. So do we have a timeline when we say, hey, by this point, we want to have this figured out?
Well, I think to Mr. McCall's point, this is a goal in our strategic plan. So absolutely, by the end of that strategic plan, we want to have those goals met as far as with those consistent assessment and grading practices. Each year, we want to implement more and more so that it isn't just a stark shift, but we're gradually pushing to get where we're going to be.
So conceivably, this can go to the end of the five-year strategic plan?
Absolutely.
Okay. And so will you guys report back to us like periodically how it's going and analysis of results or whatever so that we can understand, hey, this is working or maybe we need to do more for you guys or whatever it is?
Are you asking?
Yeah, will you guys report back?
Absolutely. Anytime you like, we are happy to serve and support.
Don't tell me that, I'll bring you every month.
Well, book, book an hour because we've got chatty people who like to talk.
I think it would be beneficial every so, I mean, obviously this is something that is a slow process, so you don't have to come, you know, every month, but every so often.
No, and, and Mr. Valdez, to your point, this is the work of our district. We are here to, to grow our students and to empower them to go out into the world. And so again, this team behind me is so incredibly amazing and the work they do, they're small but mighty. But the work that we do every day helps to build this. And so we, we would be able to speak at any time. You're welcome to email, call, visit us or bring us back at any point. And we're happy to update you on, on the work we're doing.
I'd just be curious, you know, six months, a year from now, hey, let's take a look back and see how, how it's gone, you know? A big part of, in my, in my estimation of changing, you know, we're saying we're returning to something or we're changing something is kind of changing the culture. So are we, are we pushing that down to staff level, teacher level? Hey, we're as a system returning to rigor, like this is district wide? Is that, are we messaging that?
I, I think so. I mean, I think that starts with Dr. Bearden and that's a message that he's given the leaders in our district. And, and certainly our, our principals share that with their staff and their students. But I think the biggest thing is not just our words, but our actions. And so what I hope you've seen throughout this presentation is, you know, whoever's doing the talking is doing the learning. Whoever's doing the work is doing the learning. And our focus has been on getting kids active, getting them engaged, getting them involved. You saw pictures of kids up doing the work. They're doing science, they're doing math. And so I think that message isn't just from our words, but from the actions and the experiences that you'll see in the classrooms.
And the, the last question, and Mr. McCall kind of touched on this, but do we ever achieve uniformity? Do we ever get to a point where every school is handling assessments and retakes and these things the same? Because that seems to be like where we get a lot of community angst about, you know, this class is this, this class is that, this school is different from this one.
I, I think there's some elements that should be consistent, absolutely. I think there's some things that, where autonomy is key. And, and I'll give you an example. I was the principal at Settles Bridge Elementary, very high performing, ranked in the top 10 in the state school. And I was the principal at Coming Elementary, which was a Title I school and had some unique challenges. And so sometimes in our, in our summative assessments, the language of the questions may have prevented a student at Coming from demonstrating mastery because their language skills weren't quite there. They knew the content, but maybe a particular word or vocabulary word in the question or the complexity of the question prevented them from showing that knowledge. So I think there are times where some flexibility is appropriate. I think some of our grading practices and what our goal is, is that if we're measuring the mastery of a standard, that should be consistent across the district. If we, if you were a child at Forsyth Central High School, and you made an A in your AP Human Geography class, and you did the exact same work at South Forsyth High School, you should make an A in that class. It's the same work, the same standards. So I think that's where the consistency is important. But sometimes there are some accommodations that need to be made for different learning needs.
Yeah, I was going to, that is such a great question, and it's something we talk about a lot. But teacher autonomy, there is some importance to that. Because as LeAnn mentioned earlier, there are students that will game the system, that will not take, you know, an assessment seriously, knowing there will be an opportunity after an opportunity. However, if you drew a line in the sand and said there's no opportunity for retake, you might have another student who's working really hard and is making progress and is prepared to retake and show that they have now mastered it. But if you say, no, you don't get a chance, what's the message you're sending that student? Because our goal was, we want all of our students to master the standards, right? But we don't want our students to game the system either. And so there has to be a balance in there, and there has to be some teacher autonomy and teacher professionalism who knows that this individual student, this child deserves an opportunity to take it again because this child is showing great work and great promise. And I think that child is going to earn the higher grade. Whereas you have this other child who's really not taking it seriously at all, you might have a different conversation with that student. So it's really hard, when you're serving 55,000 kids, to say, we're going to do this one blanket thing for every single child because they're not all the same. Does that make sense? But it's, I mean, it's a great conversation we have. And you have to have that balance of high expectations as a school system along with school and teacher autonomy as well.
And to that point, I think our high school principals in particular can answer that, too. They're under the pressure with their students earning, you know, their grades count toward their GPA, which leads to qualifying for the HOPE Scholarship, or maybe a Vow-Sow designation. And so it is important to look at, when you're talking about students who may earn college tuition, we want to make sure those opportunities are equitable.
Thank you. This was very helpful. I did read it before, I didn't understand any of it, but now that you guys explained it, I understand it a lot better.
And we were talking, like, what do they mean by this?
You retook the test, is what I hear.
I didn't get any calls over the weekend, so I thought you guys had it all.
The one other thing I would suggest, and we are always open to board members, you know, Kathleen was mentioning earlier, meeting with teachers today. When we have opportunities like that, if you have time to come in and sit in on some of those conversations, I'm telling you, they're incredibly powerful.
I would love to.
And so, yeah, we can make that stuff available to you. And we welcome you to come in and see what our teachers are, what they're talking about, what they're learning, and how they're trying to come to consensus as a group.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
Don't go anywhere, LeAnn.
You're next, LeAnn.
Oh, okay, don't go anywhere.
Great job, guys, thank you very much.
Future agenda items, do we have anything?
No, we're good.
Okay. Now we have amendment to the 2324 calendar for high school students with LeAnn Rice.
Well, you're only going to have me briefly. I am here to introduce two of our high school principals who are representing the entire high school principal group. They are going to present a case for you to look at a virtual learning week during May. In the past few years, we've had a virtual learning week. We've had an online learning week for high school students because their EOC exams and their AP exams have occurred at the same time. This year, not only does your calendar have challenges, so does the testing calendar. And so for the high school students, they have one week of AC, oh, AC, EOC exams, a week of AP exams, another week of AP exams. And so we want to look, our principals have really looked at their data, they've looked at the calendar, and they have a presentation for you on how they want to restructure that virtual learning week.
Good afternoon, everyone. First, want to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to come and speak about this and kind of make a case for virtual learning week and hearing our talking points. As Amanda and I were working with the high school principals, putting this presentation together and putting talking points together, we wanted to keep in mind the governance team goals. Obviously, what we want to do as a district and what we want to accomplish. And as you hear the talking points throughout this presentation, I think you'll find that they align with really two main points of those goals. And that one is the goal number three, effective and efficient financial planning. We'll talk about how a non-virtual week versus a virtual week kind of impacts us financially as schools. And then goal number four, making our large schools feel small. We'll talk about how, you know, a virtual learning week provides us the autonomy to meet our individual student needs throughout that week. So as you listen, that should come through in our talking points.
So as LeAnn mentioned, the, I think when she went back and looked in board meeting notes, it was actually first approved in the school year 2020, but we didn't test in 2020 because we were all at home. And we all know why, we don't like to talk about it. But we maintain that in the school year 2021 because of the overlap of EOCs with AP testing. We also maintained it because it provided us the opportunity to provide social distancing during testing and keep those safety measures in place as we were all still navigating through COVID. So this, and, you know, one of the largest pushbacks of the virtual days is from the middle and elementary parents in terms of childcare. And I get that as the mom of an elementary kid, that definitely creates some inconveniences. But this is just for the high school, we're just asking for you to consider it for the high schools. And there's a reason for that, where testing gets a lot more complicated at the high school level and a lot greater in volume than at the middle and elementary levels. And over the past three years, we've really discovered a lot of benefits to having this week in terms of providing targeted interventions for our seniors and for students who need extra interventions as we head into the end of the school year to get them to passing. So we're looking at, as we talk about the return to rigor, we're very proud as high school principals that we have seen the numbers of AP course enrollments rise. I think we have more than, percentage-wise, than any of our surrounding districts. And come May, between the high schools, we will give close to 20,000 AP exams within the month of May.
And keep in mind, that's over a two-week time period. College Board sets that exam schedule, tells us when we have to test certain tests. So we have no flexibility with it. So they tell us exactly what the dates are.
How far out is the date?
They do it one year out. So they have not released a schedule for spring of 2025. So we usually get in like about March, April, May is when they start working on that test schedule. So we usually know about a year in advance, but there's no flexibility that we have with that.
So we're strategically, oh, I feel like the mic just came on. We're strategically, when we looked at our data in terms of the volume of tests, we are proposing, instead of traditionally, we've had the week of EOC test as the virtual week. But in light of our increased AP enrollments, we're strategically asking for the first week of AP testing to actually be the week that we could utilize virtual learning in order to help us accommodate all of the tests or the bulk of these tests. And this is a week, you can see from the schedule, that the most popular AP courses will be given their exam.
So when you look at that week in total, now this was, these numbers were as of Sunday. Registration is still happening. It's late registration right now for our AP classes. So these numbers have actually increased since we put all this together on Sunday and pulled the numbers as late as we could. So that first week, and all of the exams that you saw on that previous slide, we're giving roughly 10,935 AP exams in one week. Now, that number has gone up. But the spreadsheet below, when Amanda mentioned the most popular exams, those ones for that first week are the most popular exams. So just those seven AP exams in that first week are roughly 8,200 or almost 8,300 exams. So when you talk about all the moving pieces of having to facilitate those high-stakes testing, it becomes pretty troublesome in terms of making sure the kids have the right instruction or getting the right type of learning occurring during that week. If I go back to this one slide, in preparation for this, I tried to find a couple of kids' schedules to see, okay, what does this look like for some kids? Or how grand could it be, or how small could it be? And I did find a couple of students said, when you're looking at the schedule, on Tuesday, they take the AP seminar exam in the afternoon. On Wednesday, they take the AP Computer Science exam in the afternoon. On Thursday, they're scheduled to take AP Environmental in the morning, AP Psychology in the afternoon, and then Friday morning, AP US History. So we did have a handful of students that are taking all five of those exams, and it's all during that first week. So when you talk about the volume of exams and the number of tests that need to be facilitated, that becomes a major focus for our students during this week. Obviously, it's high stakes, they can earn college credit, which can save them thousands of dollars in tuition by getting a certain score on this exam. So by having this volume, this is why we strategically picked this first week. Just to provide you an example of what this may look like at a school, I worked with Dr. Britton, who's our AP coordinator at West. And AP Human Geography is our largest test administration. We have over 370 kids this year taking AP Human Geography. That's one exam, and that's mostly ninth graders. But you have some 10th through 12th graders mixed in there. So in setting up for this one exam, if those numbers stay where they are and don't increase, this is what we would be looking at. We use our auxiliary gym to test our AP students. We can fit 250 kids in our auxiliary gym during an AP exam. Because we have 120 more students we have to accommodate, that equates to about 16 classrooms, and that's counting in special ed accommodations. So if you have a student that has accommodation of small group testing and extended time, but then you have another student that has small group extended time, and then breaks as needed, they can't be in the same room. Because a kid who takes breaks as needed can take breaks whenever they need. And so anytime they do, you have to stop the clock, it disrupts the testing environment. So those kids can't be in the same room. So we kind of calculated a little bit and ended up using about 16 classrooms. That's essentially shutting down a whole hall and then about half of another one. Because we can't disrupt that testing environment. In terms of staff or people needed, in the auction for the 250 people, we would need seven examiners, so that's seven staff members that need to be in there at all times during that test. That's about three, three and a half hours. We would need 16 examiners in the classrooms, so one examiner for each classroom. And then we would need four staff members rotating as hall monitors. So if an examiner needed a restroom break, they leave and someone steps in. So right there, that's 27 staff members here at West that we have to utilize for that one exam. Not to mention the administrator that has to sit in that area and make sure it's blocked off and quiet. A test of this magnitude, we'd probably use two administrators to stay down there. And that creates limited movement. We can't use the bells because that could be considered a testing violation or testing irregularity because of disturbance. And we also have to lock down one full hall and all the surrounding areas to make sure we can accommodate those. Additionally, with the move to more of a electronic-based testing, now we're pulling Chromebooks in. That can't be utilized in the classroom for instruction if we're in a face-to-face environment. So it limits the resources that our teachers can use in the classrooms because we're pulling these devices for testing. If we were to do more of a face-to-face environment for this testing week, which we had done in the past, in the past, some history here, we used to utilize Linear Tech, the conference center there at Linear Tech. The cost got too great, and the AP, number of AP exams we were administering got to be too large. So we had to move out of Linear Tech. Schools were kind of dependent upon themselves to find different locations outside of the school to facilitate these exams. So we've done, people have used rec centers, they've used churches, they've used, you know, different facilities. But that comes at a cost, and they don't have the physical space to accommodate where our exams have gotten in terms of the number of exams. So some other issues that created offsite was, we had transportation issues. We had kids that relied on school bus getting to school in the morning and getting them home in the afternoon. AP exams start at 8:00 sharp every morning. So if they have a morning exam, the buses aren't typically getting to school until 8:00, 8:15. They may not have a ride to be able to get there, and they typically have to be there about 7:30 in the morning. So that created some transportation issues for students. And we don't want that to prevent kids from being able to take an exam because they can't get there. Additionally, by pulling all those staff members to facilitate the exams, we've got to get subs in the building to cover their classes that are still occurring face-to-face. With, you know, in the past, an examination, we might have needed to pull eight to 12 subs. You're talking a magnitude of 27 staff members, we're trying to get 27 subs in one day. And the cost with the sub-cost rising, that's a great financial cost and a burden to the school. But that's not just at West. Lambert will test at the exact same time, and they have 450 kids doing the same exam. South Forsyth testing at that exam at the same time. So you're talking every school's needing to pull 20 to 30 subs. Not only is that a financial cost on us, but then we're getting into, that's a strain on the elementary and middle levels for their teachers that are out that day. Now they're having a hard time finding subs. So it can create some, a lot of logistical, financial issues, and even staffing issues.
And then for me, the more important cost, anyone who knows me in this room knows I would not stand up here and advocate for anything that would compromise quality instruction for our students. But as a former high school test coordinator prior to having the virtual week, and also as just a parent of two high school students now, I strongly believe that we can provide more quality instructional activities and opportunities for students by utilizing the virtual week. You've got a couple, what happens when we're, students are left with subs, or in worst-case scenario, because we're so limited on space at a school like Lambert, where I'm at 130% capacity, I don't have extra space to put children. So a lot of times, they're left in like kind of these large holding areas, in the gym or in the cafeteria. And it's, you know, just more of like a babysitting, you know, situation. And they're not receiving quality instruction. Or they're with a sub or another teacher covering the class, and that, you just can't replace the classroom teacher in those instances. So you've got a couple of quotes there from students that both Erin and I spoke with about, you know, what they thought of the activities during their virtual learning week. One said, "My teacher provided great online review activities during the virtual week, which helps me prepare and study. The lessons were interactive and meaningful, and when I needed help, my teachers were available for me. My teachers created virtual lessons that challenged my thinking, but also provided me with the ability to balance my time between the exams and classwork." And we have to remember, these teachers, you know, their ability to provide quality online instruction is so different now than it was pre-COVID. Just out of necessity, they had to get familiar with it, and they had to get good at it. And so I think that we can provide really quality interactions for our students, even from home that week versus having them sit with a rotating door of subs or other teachers covering their classes.
And speaking from my personal experience, when I taught previously, my class was always relocated during testing weeks when we were in face-to-face instruction. Some days, I had three kids show up to the cafeteria or stationed for two and a half to three weeks. Some days, I had 12, some days, I had 25 because they're in and out all the time taking these exams or, you know, doing other things during that week. So it does create a challenge for the teacher to be able to, even if you're in your own classroom, knowing who's showing up on a day-to-day basis and knowing what I can plan for instructionally or what I can actually plan for, for their, who's there physically. In addition to that week just being the first week of AP testing, these are other things that are occurring during that week. So it's not just AP testing that we're talking about. That's the big one, right? That's the one, that's the biggest magnitude. But when you look, EOC week, we're going to have EOC makeups that next week, and that's that first week of AP testing. And one thing that always impacts that, we have really, really strong, powerful DECA programs, right? We are very proud of our DECA programs. We have three high schools that have the largest, three of the largest enrollments in the world in DECA. ICDC, their international conference, is the first three days of EOC testing. So those kids that end up going to the national conference, or the international conference in Anaheim, are going to miss the first three days of EOC testing. So now they naturally have to roll the makeups the following week. Well, then if they're also taking AP exams, now we're trying to coordinate a makeup EOC in time with their AP exams. And then their ability to attend class in a face-to-face environment, just, it becomes very hard for them. We also have end-of-pathway makeups. We have, most high schools have 250-plus kids take an end-of-pathway exams. Those makeups roll during that week as well because of the way the calendar works out. That week is also the week seniors take final exams. So being able to facilitate a more flexible schedule for our seniors, instead of saying, you know, your first-period exam is Monday during first period. If you miss it, you know, we'll try to get you in by Friday or Monday because senior grades are due this day. Then we can work with them a little bit more and provide a little more flexibility for the seniors. And then the big one, too, is our senior recovery. We've talked and shared with you guys about some of the changes to Mountain Ed and some of these recovery programs that we had access to before. Now that week is a senior boot camp. So those kids that may have gone to Mountain Ed for additional recovery, remediation, whatever it is, or to get the course credit, now we're keeping them in-house, and we're using that week to really hit hard with them, not only the seniors, but also to our underclassmen as well, because we're getting to the end of the year. So we have teachers, you know, that are available. Our counselors work with our kids to do a lot of recovery during that week. And again, it's more flexible. So it's not stringent on a bell schedule or a calendar or anything along those lines.
Additionally, from the student perspective, not just in terms of quality learning, but in terms of their mental health and stress management, in terms of their mental health and stress management, you have to keep in mind, this group of seniors does not know exam week at the high school level without a virtual week. They are used to it. This is what they've known their entire high school experience. So when I've spoken with some seniors and said, we may not have the virtual week this year, the look of just terror on their faces is real. Like they, they don't know how to think through, how am I going to prepare for all of these exams and be in class every day? So that's just something to think about too. They have learned how to utilize this time to study. They've learned how to utilize this time to prioritize depending on how their exam schedule falls. You have a quote from a student there, "I had three exams in one week last year, so school being virtually afforded me the ability to plan my time accordingly for studying and completing my schoolwork. The virtual learning week was crucial to my success, both in my classes and on my AP exams."
And one of the things, you know, we like to talk about a lot is we want to make sure we're creating the conditions for success for our students. And when you talk to the students about this virtual week and the stress that these tests add on and then having to think about class or attending class face-to-face, keeping up with schoolwork there in a face-to-face format, the, the stress is real, their anxiety is real. And I know sometimes, you know, it's, it's hard to acknowledge that because we didn't go through that or we didn't really experience that, but it does. And, and, you know, we want to make sure we're creating those conditions for success for our students.
And we are ultimately preparing the majority of them to go on to college, and this does model the college, you know, model in terms of, if you remember, and it's been a while for me at least, but we didn't continue to go to class when, when finals week rolled around. We had a, a schedule just set for finals.
Some other considerations too, that these are issues or concerns that have been, you know, brought to our attention in the past when we've done virtual learning weeks is, the self-contained or specialized instruction students, they'll still come to school in the face-to-face format. You know, they have a different set of needs, they have a different set of routines, they need a different set of supports and services. So those students, we would still plan on them coming to school as we've done with other, other virtual learning weeks and online learning days. The buses will still run as normal, so students who want to come to school, they come to school. We do realize that kids maybe need a quiet place to study, or maybe the safest place they have is the school, and so not taking that away from them can hinder their ability to be successful. So still allow those kids to come to school that want to come to school. They may not have access to their teachers because they may be helping facilitate tests, but we can find a quiet place to study, provide them the resources they need, make sure they have help. You know, if it's not their specific teacher, but they need help in Algebra I, we can find another teacher to help them in Algebra I. And additionally, those kids may just need a breakfast and a lunch. So maybe they just come to school for that, and that's okay. We still want to serve breakfast and lunches every day for those kids that need them or those kids that want them. Maybe they finished testing and they're hungry and they don't have a ride for an hour or two, or they have to wait for the bus in the afternoon. Well, we'll put them in a place to study and we'll make sure that they have a lunch. Additionally, these are expectations that we have for our teachers, but we would obviously make sure that we're clear on them and review them with them, make sure they're supported here, is making sure they're providing daily online office hours for our students, so when they're available. Also providing them with synchronous and asynchronous learning opportunities. So, you know, if a teacher wants to set up a synchronous learning session for an hour, sharing that link with their, their students through Canvas and then having live interaction with them. Our teachers are great at that. Again, like Amanda said, five years ago, I don't think we'd both be comfortable saying that, but now our teachers have really excelled at that. And also just making sure we're providing them any review study activities in addition to those other ones. And then year to year, this provides a consistent expectation for our students, knowing each year that this week will be a virtual learning week, and so we can plan accordingly as a school, they can plan accordingly as students, parents, community members, whatever. Maybe it just provides that consistency as we get into that crazy testing season.
So you would like for this to continue in the near future? Is there a way that if the board agrees that we can adopt this as a standard and then they don't have to come and present every?
I really...
I mean, next year, you should make Bob and them come up, but...
I was wondering how they got elected.
Yeah, and, and only because it's West and Lambert where...
We were wondering how you got elected to be the presenters, which you're very empowered to have to say, I'm impressed.